Workshop for the, for workshop to open our session this evening. We have some special guests. Mr. Mitchell, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, yes. This is the Senior High String Quartet. This is our top group. Stephanie Bonk on first violin in the tenth grade, Mandy Polowicz on violin two, a senior, and Tony Farner on cello, senior. Jeff Trossby, a senior on viola. And they're going to play the fourth and final movement of the Dvorak American String Quartet.
So we go into it? (Music) Very nicely done.
Thank you.
You say that the music comes in savage peace. I'm good for another 10 minutes. Thank you very much. Mr. O'Gough, I believe you've got some other high key.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for having us tonight. I just want to recognize four of our student athletes from some of the tremendous honors that they've achieved this year. So first is Sam Fear. Sam is a senior. He was a sophomore, was all county in soccer for us. Junior was all division. In this past season, this fall season, he was all county and made the all-state team. And Sam is going to the United States Air Force Academy to continue his education in soccer. Next is Michael Menendez. Michael Menendez is a sophomore for us. This year on the football field, Michael earned all-county, all-state, and all-American honors. Michael has a tremendous future ahead of him. He has already been offered by Penn State, Michigan State, Temple, Rutgers, and Virginia. And shortly will be going to Notre Dame and Ohio State, and I think that he might come back with two more offers. So congratulations to Michael. Michael is also a member of our basketball team and earned all-division honors as well this year.
Can I play left side? Can you throw Bloomsburg in the mix?
I was trying with Quittstown today. That was great.
And I am always interested in Notre Dame tickets.
Next is Ethan Steever. Ethan is a junior. Ethan was all-county. He was the Berks County champion at 145. He was the sectional champion. He was the district champion for us. I'm sorry, fourth place in the district. I'm sorry. I'm trying to remember all this. And he was a state qualifier. He ended the year this year with 42 wins, which is second as an accomplishment on a team for Exeter. So Ethan had a tremendous year as well. Next is Brett Cole. Brett is a sophomore. Brett was all-county, won the sectional championship. He won the District III AAA championship at 106 pounds and was a fifth-place finisher which medaled at the state tournament this past weekend. Brett also has the highest wins in Exeter history for a season, which is 46. So congratulations.
If you'll open your newspaper, the Southern Berks from March 5th, it's probably one of my favorite sports pictures of the year, which is Everett High's coach after his, was that your county win?
District.
District win, but it's an awesome picture. So that was great. Congratulations.
We commend you all for your achievements. And thank you for being here. It's good to see you in representation like yourself out in the community representing all of us. Thank you very much.
Thanks guys, well done.
Thank you.
And they're smart, they're lead.
Congratulations.
You're well informed.
I would like to announce that we did meet an executive session to discuss student processing. We will meet again subsequent to this meeting to discuss personnel. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Hearing no volunteers, we'll move right along. We have three sets of minutes that we will consider for adoption next week. I know one correction has been made. Is anyone seeing any other corrections that are necessary? We have this week to give them.
What correction, what correction was raised?
There's a correction on a vote to apply for authority to use the special areas for the tax rates. You and Dr. Tamura both voted against that, and the minutes of that indicate that has been adjusted.
Well, also, where we, the support staff, I don't have support staff, but the substitute teacher staff, it has said, "Dr. Weber provided a degree for district guest teachers." She said she would provide, she didn't provide, but at that meeting, she said she would provide a minimum teacher. So that's...
I don't believe Dr. Weber ever said.
I know.
She said she could.
She said she could, and you said she didn't have to.
I said it was irrelevant, that's correct.
Well, maybe you think...
And then Dr. Weber volunteered to provide it for the next meeting.
It says, "Dr. Weber provided a degree for district guest teachers."
That should be strict, and then she volunteered to provide it.
I thought at the workshop she indicated she would, and then at the voting meeting you actually listed.
I think, yeah.
That's why I replied.
They may have verbally done it, I think.
I think you did it verbally.
Yeah, I think that, and then I had a copy here, so...
When I say provide, I didn't mean a written list, I meant...
Right.
Well, I think she said, "We have teachers that are people that are this, this, and this," but she wasn't talking specifically for the ones that were there.
Correct, I had a whole list in front of me, and I gave an example, I think. That's what I did.
I think that needs to be...
Very well, then, any other corrections to mention? Moving on to the two policies we're considering. Has anyone else seen any other corrections or additions or any comments on those two?
I'm getting lost in these sorts of meetings.
If you don't behave yourself, you can pause for a review of all of them and then pay the six months like you did last year.
Well, no.
It was more than six months.
Right, it was more than six months.
It wasn't eternity.
Policy 913, I think, it talks about non-school organizations and groups not having to apply to present information.
Please turn on your microphone.
Policy, Policy 913, throughout the policy, it suggests that non-school entities have to apply to the superintendent and be approved by the board for something that they might be doing, and they may be denied access. And so, then I looked at the non-school organizations, and I realized that the Education Association would be a non-school entity, and so would tips. And if the Education Association is a non-school entity, then I shouldn't be selling your clothes. So it gets really, to me, it was really convoluted, and there weren't, I'm not sure, I just...
Yeah, I have to clarify that with John when he returns, but the Education Foundation exists to raise money directly for the students of the school.
But it's not a part of the school.
It's not, it would be considered a non-school. Yeah, it's not school.
That's right. So I think that maybe we want to look at that, read it again, and see. I can't sit here and tell you exactly what page and what line it is right now, because I've got it terribly confused in my mind, but I was going over it and I said, "Okay, this doesn't sound right." And then there was something about, oh, scholarships. The, I'm not sure, does the board have to approve all of the scholarships that are given?
What, do you know what page that's on, Kara?
Two of three.
Two of three?
Two of three.
Yeah, that's exactly. In the non-school organizations? I can ask John about that. I think he might be out of town, but...
Maybe, I think that I'll do this, I'll just try to just send you a message, because I went over this, and I can say that.
Yeah.
It's just very convoluted. I'll just send you an email with my issues, and then you can decide what to do with it. The other thing was that religious and political organizations do, that's not quite clear about whether you can, you can't, who can, and who can't. And so, it leaves a lot of holes in the policy.
Yeah, well, it's designed to be more liberal than the former policy, which was not in compliance with the law. But in terms of those nuances, I have to defer to John's legal expertise, so if you want to just let me know what your specific questions are.
By being more liberal, it allows you to sort of end up in a corner, because you can say yes to this, we could do that, but why would you, how could you defect yourself? Because it's just written in that string of certain words.
Right.
So anyhow, same to you.
That's because it's legal language.
You'll be checking with Mr. Malzni, and if it's not to our satisfaction, next week we'll just...
Yeah. There's also going to be another policy coming to the board next week, and it's specifically, the very first policy we have establishes our address as 3650 Kirkland. So we're just gonna...
Do you know it?
Yeah, yeah. The board's official address. So I don't think that Dr. Wegman wants our mail, so we should probably...
We'll also do drawings and full service...
I don't think I'll be your patient.
All right, business functions. Any further comments on the policy? Business functions, Mr. Shaw.
Before getting to the question on informational items, do we have the specific date for the meeting with Antietam?
Yes, I was going to ask Mr. Quinter to announce that before the end of the meeting. It might be Wednesday, the 26th at 7:00 PM at Reifton in the cafeteria. Wednesday, March 26th.
You said 7:00, wasn't it?
7:00 PM, yeah. Antietam had asked for a 7:00 PM start.
Just to reiterate, if there is a report that's available, if we have a chance to see it beforehand.
I know, and that with the Antietam business manager today?
Yes, and we're targeting to have it out for Friday before, so whatever happens to begin to...
And are you going to put that on the website?
Yes, Don and I talked about, a little bit about advertising it. We wanted to make sure that that date was solidified tonight before we went any further with the advertising.
Because I have had a few people ask me about it, and I said it would be on the website, so that's cool.
Yeah, yeah, full advertising and other methods as well is put on the website.
Okay, business functions. A, we're going to be voting on authorizing district administration to solicit proposals to provide architectural engineering services for the plan and design of the transportation center, known to us as the bus farm. That's in six A. Questions? Do you have any comments?
One comment, just a, I think we should have a page limit on this, or else we're going to basically get humongous tones to read through. I think we should have like a five-page limit, which isn't irregular. I respond to three-page, five-page, and seven-page RFPs all the time. That way, they could have five, three to five pages to respond to our questions, and they can include up to the five resumes which are outside that sheet limit, as well as an org chart which will be separate. That way, we won't have these large documents, frankly, none of us have time to get through, but they can respond specifically to our questions.
Would you accept the dendums to the...
Excuse me?
If they want to provide more, do they divide it in the form of that dendum?
No, then they're outside of the, the back piece gets totally ignored.
Okay.
Because it's common practice that if you have a sheet limit, you have that, except for where it's indicated, that something will be included outside, like resumes or org charts or things of that nature.
So, Mr. Brady, can you give us some kind of an idea, like what kind of upgrades would be, would be happening in this bus farm as compared to what we now have?
We're getting a new bus farm.
I understand that, but you know what I'm saying?
Well, let's see. What are the things we're looking at specifically? I won't go in specifics, because we don't have a design yet, but I can tell you the characteristics of what we need. First thing is, we need a building that is able to handle the width of our buses. We need a secure facility for the storage of all our spare parts, and our tires, and miscellaneous things of that nature, also our oil and gas products. I know that, as mentioned by Mr. Wegman, we have various oil products that come in large trucks, and we need to store that in a more secure manner than we currently do. Also, we're going to have a wash bay in this building, because we, it'll help to maintain the buildings, to maintain the buses. We're still working out the details, and the architect will help us with that, as far as clean facilities for the buses. What I mean by that is, if we have an icy or snowy day, our buses may not go on the road with any roof, any snow on the roofs, or they can have a severe fine given to them by the local police, and also it's a danger for those on their motor surround them. So that will be building this. It's going to have minimum, I think it was two or three days for, it was going to have two, two, three, three days for work, and one day for, one day for washing in this. And right now, we only have two days, if I remember correctly. And they're not correctly able to handle our buses. Plus, in addition to that, our current facility doesn't have adequate parking for buses and individuals, it's very tight. The biggest deal that we can look at here, the biggest issue, is the fact that accessing onto Shelbourne Road with our buses, even though cars do slow down when they see a bus, it is a very big liability we have. Unfortunately, we've never had any kind of accidents that I know of, but we are just at risk continually. And by putting our facility on 562, out of a residential area, in an area where there'll be a clear sight triangle for our vehicles when they're accessing onto a major road, I think that'll be a much better situation for not only our drivers, but also the public in March. So besides the fact that our current facility is past its prime, it's in a very deteriorated state, there are the benefits. I hope I've answered.
I just wanted to know, you said we have three days rather than two days. I just wanted to know what additional things, I know what, you know, what was there, and I know the safety issue, you know, that's not, you know, that's not debatable at all. But I just wanted to know, you know, what additional things we would be having, but you went on in last...
They'll help you? They'll give you an answer? They'll give you an answer?
I think you just went around them, but we'll let it go.
Thank you. I hope that was an A+. I always look forward to it.
Letter B, we will be voting on authorizing expenditures for the Berks Career and Technology Center's general program for July 1st, 2014 to June 30, 2015. Our share for that fiscal year will be $1,328,714, down slightly from this year. The cost includes tuition payments for regular and special needs students and debt service payments. The district's proportioned share for the budget for regular education students is 9.32 percent based on a three-year enrollment average of 139 students, and the special needs proportioned share is 10.31 percent based on current enrollment of 10 students. Again, that's an attachment six B. And then lastly, we will be in six C, authorizing budget transfers in the amount of $3,063. That's it.
I'm sure, any questions, comments? Thanks, Jill. Dr. Bender, personnel.
First item on their personnel retirements, so three support staff. Part B are appointments of certificated, one certificated staff, substitute teachers, both certified and guest teachers, three support staff, and finally, appointments of a particular person. Part C, a leave of absence for certificated staff. And finally, part D would be approval of staff conferences we intend to approve. Any questions?
Dr. Bender, I just have a question. I'm just curious, in reading this, does the softball, the senior high school junior varsity softball coach, how's her salary compared to the senior high school junior varsity baseball coach?
The senior high school varsity, say that again?
The senior high school junior varsity baseball coach has a salary here, and the softball coach, I was wondering how her salary compared to the senior high school junior varsity baseball coach?
I could run into my office and grab the contract. Tom, do you know?
It's the same unit level, it just matters on years of experience, which differentiates the final salary.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
And that's it for personnel.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Bender? Mrs. Quinter, student functions.
We do have, in your graphic, the notes from the meeting at the high school, and we do have student functions meeting on May, March the 25th, right? March the 25th at 6:30 in the LG, in a branch of construction in the high school.
Tom, is this thing...
Right, it is.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is. It is on. Yep. Item A, are the trips, are the field trips within a 60-mile radius? Item B, two trips to be approved next meeting for the senior high class student and the senior high departmental student. Item C, we'll be moving this agreement for a student, one of our students to the meeting for next year, next week, and that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments?
...that's available if we have a chance to see it beforehand.
I know, and that would be an antetum of this is mandatory today?
Uh, yes, and we're targeting to have it out for Friday before so whatever happens the weekend.
And are you going to put that on the website?
Uh, yes, Don and I talked about, uh, a little bit about advertising it. We wanted to make sure that that date was solidified tonight before we went any further with the advertising.
Because I have had a few people ask me about it and I said it would be on the website, so that's cool.
Yeah, yeah, full advertising and other methods as well as putting it on the website.
Okay, um, business functions, uh, A, we're going to be voting on authorizing district administration, uh, to solicit for po- proposals to provide architectural engineering services for the plan and design of the trans- transportation center known to us as the bus farm. Uh, that's in six A. Do you have any comments?
One comment, um, just a, I think we should have a pa- uh, page limit on this or else we're going to basically get humongous tones to read through. I think we should have like a five-page limit, which isn't irregular. I respond to three-page, five-page, and seven-page RFPs all the time. That way they can have five, three to five pages to respond to our questions and they can include up to the five resumes which are outside that sheet limit, as well as an org chart which will be separate. That way we won't have these large documents, frankly, none of us have time to get through. They can respond specifically to our questions.
Would you accept the dendums to the?
Excuse me?
If they want to provide more, do they divide them in a form of that deficit?
No, then they're, then they're outside of the, the back piece gets totally ignored.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's common practice that if you have a sheet limit, you have that, except for where it's indicated that something will be included outside like resumes or org charts or things of that nature.
So, uh, Mr. Brady, can you give us some kind of an idea like what kind of upgrades would be, do we have any in this bus farm as compared to what we now have?
We're getting a new bus farm.
I understand that, but you don't have any?
Well, well, let's see.
Different things?
What, the things we're looking at specifically? I won't go in specifics because we don't have a design yet, but I can tell you the characteristics of what we need. First thing is we need a building that is able to handle the width of our buses. We need a secure facility for the storage of all our spare parts, our tires, and miscellaneous things of that nature. Also, our, our oil and gas products. I know that, as mentioned by Mr. Webber, we have various oil products that come in large volumes. We need to store that in a more secure manner than we currently do. Um, also, we're going to have a wash bay in this building because we, it'll help to maintain the buildings, to maintain the buses. We're still working out the details and the architect will help us with that as far as clean facilities for the buses. What I mean by that is if we have an icy or snowy day, our buses may not go on the road with any roof, any snow on the roofs, or they can have a severe fine given to them by the local police and also it's a danger for those on their motor surround. So that will be building this. It's going to have minimum, I think it was two or three days for, it was going to have two, two, three, three days for, for work, and one day for, and one day for washing in this. And right now we only have two days if I remember correctly. And they're not correct line to handle our buses. Plus, in addition to that, our current facility doesn't have adequate parking for buses and individuals, very tight. The biggest deal that we can look at here, the biggest issue, is the fact that accessing onto Shelbourne Road with our buses, even though cars do slow down when they see a bus, it is a very big liability we have. Unfortunately, we've never had any kind of accidents that I know of, but we are just at risk continually. And by putting our facility on 562, out of a residential area, in an area where there'll be a clear sight triangle for our vehicles when they're accessing onto a major road, I think that'll be a much better situation for not only our drivers, but also the public in March. So, besides the fact that our current facility is past its prime, it's in a very deteriorated state, there are the benefits. I hope I've answered.
Well, I just, I just wanted to know, you used, you said we have three, three days rather than two days. I just wanted to know what additional things, I know what we, you know, what, what was, what was there, and I know the safety issue, you know, that's, that's, that's not, you know, that's not debatable at all. But I just wanted to know, you know, what additional things we would be having, but you went on and on.
To help, to give you the ring, to give you an answer.
I, I think you just went around, but we'll, we'll let it go.
Thank you. I hope that was an A+. I always hope for a true right.
Letter B, we will be voting on authorizing the expenditures for the Burke's Career and Technology Center's general program for July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015. Our share for that, for that fiscal year will be $1,328,714, uh, down slightly from this year. The cost includes tuition payments for regular and special needs students and debt service payments. The district's proportioned a share for the budget for regular education students is 9.32% based on a three-year enrollment average of 139 students, and the special needs proportioned share is 10.31% based on current enrollment. 10 students, again, that's an attachment six B. And then lastly, we will be, um, in six C, authorizing budget transfers in the amount of $3,063. That's it.
Sure, any questions, comments? Thanks, Jill. Dr. Bender, personnel.
First item on their personnel retirements, so three support staff. Part B are appointments of certificated, one certificated staff, subsidy teachers, both certified and guest teachers, uh, three support staff, and finally, uh, appointments of a particular person. Part C, a leave of absence, uh, for certificated staff. And finally, part D would be approval of staff conferences, uh, we intend to approve. Any questions?
Dr. Bender, I just have a question. I'm just curious in reading this. Does the softball, the senior high school junior varsity softball coach, how's her salary compared to the senior high school junior varsity baseball coach?
The senior high school varsity, say that again?
The senior high school junior varsity baseball coach has a salary here with the softball coach. I was wondering how her salary compared to the senior high school junior varsity baseball coach?
Um, I could run into my office and grab the contract. Tom, do you know?
Yeah, it's, it's the same, uh, unit level. It just matters on years of experience, which differentiates the final salary.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Don.
And that's it for personnel.
Any questions or comments for, uh, Dr. Bender? Mrs. Kutchik, student functions.
You do have in your packet the notes from the, uh, teach, I mean, the high school. And we do have student functions meeting on May, March the 25th, right? March the 25th at 6:30 in the LG, in a branch with construction in the high school.
Tom, is that?
Right, it is.
Small reach.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is. It is on.
Okay.
Yep. Item A, um, are the trips, are the skill trips within a 60-mile radius? Uh, item B, two trips to be approved next, uh, next meeting for the high, senior high class student and the senior high, uh, he, he, the elementary side student. Item C, um, we'll be moving this, um, agreement of, uh, for a student, one of our students to the meeting for next year, next week, and that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments? Curriculum, this.
Uh, we will be, we will be voting to approve the, uh, project, uh, lead the way agreement for our STEM program.
Uh, Mr. Luther.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Could you give us an idea of what the cost of this project, uh, agreement would be?
Yeah, I'm going to have to defer that to Dr. Davis. The, uh, the year one cost, we're offering introduction to engineering in year one at the high school, the incoming freshmen primarily. Uh, the cost to the district is, uh, I think we had it, um, around $60,000 for, for year one. Some of that is being paid for by the, uh, by the foundation and some of it's also the training for the teachers that will be teaching the course. This was, uh, we have a spreadsheet that, that, um, lays out the, the cost for all four years because we, we, we have costed out the entire four-year implementation of, of this program. And it's rating another course every year, so every year the freshman and when they become sophomore, there'll be at least one additional course they'll be able to take, um, on through the capstone course, um, that we get taken in our seniors.
Does that include this participation fee that I see on page three?
Page three of the, uh...
Are we clear of the agreement?
Did the $3,000 come out of that?
Number five?
Yes, yes, that's a, it's like a $3,000 yearly cost, and that's, it's not just a participation fee, but it includes all the software bundling and everything that goes into, uh, um, being able to utilize their assessments, et cetera. Of course, that's a yearly maintenance fee.
Uh, Dr. Davies, I just want to note that since we're still somewhat early in the budget process, this agreement does not commit us to anything should we find out the funds are just not going to be available.
That's correct. We had to, we actually had to get this agreement signed so that we could register our teachers for training. Those seats fell up really quickly and, uh, Mr. Potter needed to, um, have an opportunity to enroll in the Bucknell Institute before all the seats were taken up, so we wanted to make sure that we had all this taken care of so he could do that.
I, I have one other question, um, on, uh, page four, number nine, about assessment and evaluation results. And then it talks about, um, men retaining the data for like, uh, six academic years after the student has graduated. Do you know what the reason for that is?
Well, they do internal audits of the program itself because this is a national program, and they, they're going to want to know, um, how our particular program is as compared to other programs that are using, uh, pocket lead the way.
Are they publishing studies relative to the success?
They do, and they, and the, the data is used to, um, for studies, uh, to determine the program effectiveness.
Tom, do you know is it data by name or is it by some sort of student identification number?
No, the students' names are protected.
I think there's obviously a lot of people that are concerned about this collection of data, and particularly the maintenance and maintaining data for a long period of time.
Yeah, I am.
I'll find out specifically with the, with the collecting in terms of that data. My understanding was, was for program evaluation, um, and also to determine the effectiveness of our program versus, um, other, you know, comparative data, um, of other districts. I'll look into that.
Tony, Dr. Davies, if you just, if they want our data, can, can we insist that they not have names attached to it or anything?
Yeah.
I'm sure, I'm sure they don't.
I don't care about scores, but I do care about individuals' information traveling.
I, I'm sure they wouldn't be able to function.
I don't know if you can collect minors' names.
No.
It's part of any type of, I'm just going back to when we were doing our, you know, our research, you can, you know, IRB would never...
You probably want demographic information, how many males, females, age, you know.
Why, you know, they collect the tests or anything like that as much as, uh, as soon as that was created. There's only one, which would be the conference. I know this was...
Okay, uh, any other questions?
Bob, before I go on, just, just a reminder that then that's the, the next curriculum meeting will be, uh, April the 10th, uh, which is a Thursday, uh, at 6:30 here. Thank you.
Any other matters come forth, board? We will be getting a report from, uh, Mrs. Guy, but first, we have Mrs. Howard. She's going to tell us how all the rain's been.
Did the name count everyone this evening? Uh, we have a video presentation, but I'm not sure if it's going to work if Mr. Kane or someone...
I'll give it a try.
I figured that if you all had an opportunity to, to read the report, it would be nice for me to see something outside of it. Um, so I'm not just repaying what's written in the app.
There we go.
Give me those.
Is it on your website?
It's, it's a video being here. Should I take it out on the video computer? Would that be easier?
I've, I've kind of, I...
I thought you said it was on your school website.
I don't have it on. I just want to guess, just because I wanted to make sure it works, so.
Is that the prom queen?
Yeah, that was our friend.
Swag, kids.
They have our picture.
See what they can do with photo albums.
That's the same one I have on my desk.
How often you throw jars in?
The video that I'm hoping is going, is going to work is what I talk about in the board report. It's, uh, a clip of what one of the two math programs that are being piloted by our elementary teachers, what it looks like in the classroom. I think you've all heard, uh, a lot about what's happening with the Common Core, and especially the way the Common Core is going to be looking as far as math, and some of the concerns that, that many parents have even expressed about the way math is now going to look. Um, Investigations is a very interesting, um, program, and when we started to, uh, started it, we wanted to make sure that parents could hear, could see what it was about. So, uh, this is what, um, a teacher put together, Nicole Sheek. Nicole Sheek, one of our third grade teachers, put this video together.
No, it do, it does work, sort of. There we go.
Yeah.
You, that's, no, that's definitely worked.
If you all, if you all put your, uh...
We got to get them to...
My people's eye, you can hear it.
It's one of those AV kids.
Okay, so what could you do to the ground so that you could share them? Okay, so try doing that, see what happens. Okay, how many groundies do you have? You have two whole groundies, right? How many groundies do you have? Two whole groundies. How many groundies do you have?
Two small groundies.
You have two small groundies. Two whole groundies? So is that shared equally? So how can we share them equally? How could you, what could you do with them? Try it. Okay, so how many do each of you have?
Seven.
But you only had seven to start, so how did each of you have seven now?
You have seven.
So tell me how you figured that out, Kai.
We cut it, uh, liberty and hat, and then we cut the other one.
Okay, so you had all four? And then what did you do with your fourth? So you each have how much?
Seven. Four, seven.
You don't have seven whole groundies, what do you have? You have seven. I think you're probably, you're probably thinking to yourself that that was very different than what you experienced as a child in math class. And that's what I found most amazing about this particular program. We were fortunate to have six teachers piloting, uh, two first grade teachers, two second grade teachers, and two third grade teachers. And just the level of interaction and conversation that took place among the students was, was impressive. Uh, they weren't afraid to share answers, uh, even if they weren't sure because there was other people that were there that they would help them, they would have an opportunity to talk about it. And it was really interesting to see, um, how the conversations started to evolve. And it, 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 it gives the children a different sense of what numbers mean. Whereas before and now, um, with what we currently do, it's very procedural. We teach the children procedure, that's the way I learn math, you do it this way, this is the only way you do it, and this is how you're going to come up with the answer. But when you're walking into a first grade class, second grade class, or third grade classes, using this program, it's all about discovery and discussion, and it's all very hands-on. So, um, for example, when we are raised, when I learn multiplication tables, it's memorization of flashcards, whereas here it's actually something that they were cutting out, they could see how this made sense. So, uh, we're not directly te, they weren't directly teaching multiplication, but you could walk into that classroom and ask students, um, what's five times eight? And they would be able to tell you because of that hands-on experience. So it was really interesting, and it was really neat to see, the kids loved it. Uh, so it was a very enjoyable experience for the teachers who had the opportunity to pilot the program. And we thought that by putting together the video, uh, because we knew that there would be a lot of questions about it because, again, this is not the way we were taught math, this would be a good way for parents to go on and see what their children were doing in third grade. Yes?
Thank you for showing us the, the hands-on learning. But you said there are two programs. How's the other program different from this?
This, the second program, Envisions, is more of a tr, it's more, I feel, a traditional approach, uh, where it's more paper pencil. There are a lot of videos that go along with it, but it is more of a paper pencil. Uh, and that's why, um, I chose really to highlight this one because we, we're actually doing that one right now. So I've only seen it, uh, in two different passions at this time. And so I'm anxious to get back in and see what they, what the children think about it because when I was in, uh, talking to the children about investigations, oh, this is a salary, you know, this is so cool. So when I go back in the classroom now that they've done it for a couple of weeks, I'm going to be asking them, what do you think about divisions? Um, and see what they, what they, just how they respond.
Thanks.
Now, I know they do it hands-on. Now, the curriculum per se, though, um, are you seeing that the same concepts are being taught in, in, in third grade as compared to, uh, more concepts, or what, what, what do you see?
I don't know that it's more concepts because of the way that math is for the Common Core, but it's making, uh, us realize that students need to have a deeper understanding of the concepts that they're taught. And there definitely, it definitely appears that there's going to be a shift in what students need to know at certain grade levels. Uh, our kindergarten isn't doing investigations, but the, the level of math work that's happening in kindergarten is simply amazing. And, you know, before they were focusing, being on, on counting. Uh, now the students are using ten frames, um, they're already doing addition and subtraction. And again, it's not the traditional approach of teaching a procedure. It's all very hands-on discussion using manipulatives, and this, and the children, I didn't, I didn't know that, I didn't think kindergartens could do it. Um, but wow, was I, was I blown away. So I think we're definitely going to see a shift in what we're expecting children to know and be able to do at different, um, in the different grade levels.
So is the curriculum is being pushed down?
I, I would say yes. I would say yes.
I was just wondering. So what, when are they, when you said about, um, multiplication, third grade, is that, is that going to be, uh, introduced earlier, or, or?
I don't believe that that's going to be introduced earlier, but I think the way that we're approaching it is more beneficial because the children have an understanding then of what, uh, the numbers mean, instead of just memorizing the multiplication tables.
Well, I know when I was in school, I had to memorize multiplication tables, but when I taught school, it, it was, it was a different story.
And it, and it's important, it's important to be able to do that, but it's also be, it's also important to be able to understand why, and why the numbers look like that and why they, you know, they equal what you do.
So I kind of figured it was going down.
Any other questions, Miss? Thank you, Kristy.
Thanks, Kristy.
It's good to see you. We have a, uh, Anne, you're ready to review the budget now, or?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
I want you to know that I went to kindergarten class, and I thought that Julie Quine gave a remarkable presentation. And if you haven't heard about it, or, you know, did somebody say that already about your, your kindergarten group? Julie. Did they say? The parents.
Oh, they, they were very appreciative.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you knew about it. It was dynamic, right?
Thank you.
I didn't know you were teaching when Carol was a kindergarten.
I had the whole group start by saying, can you recollect anything from your kindergarten year? And they had to jot down what they remembered, so I don't know what she remembered from her kindergarten year, but I did share what I remembered from mine, and it was my cowgirl outfit.
I was deprived of that girl.
That was show and tell, and I brought my cat guns in.
I remember that more.
You remember that, no?
Truly, I think we still have the food section.
But this is the first year that it's been done, and it was, it, there were about, what, forty, fifty parents there?
About forty.
Forty? Yeah. It, it was really dynamic, and, uh, there were a few parents that stood there with their sort of, I don't believe this. And one gentleman, I think, asked you whether or not you were expecting too much, and she went over and said, oh, no, that's okay, honey, you're going to be all right. The child's going to work really well. The child's going to work really well.
It was, it was a really good, you know how it is when you present? It was a really great audience because I said to them, there are things all over the table. I said, this will be very interactive. You'll be writing, you'll be turning and talking, you'll be doing a lot of things. So, it was great. And Don and I feel that this is something we'd really like to continue to do because this is a very receptive audience. It's a great introduction to Exeter School District and all of the things that we do here community-wise too. Because we talked about the library and the women's club and the things that they do for the school. So, it was very well received and something that I think we'd like to continue to do as a district.
Thank you. Now, a call upon Mrs. Gaddish, and we will read in the budget press.
Joe, do you have comments, or should I just go over? We did have a meeting, business function committee meeting last evening, and we discussed a few of the slides. But because there's some pieces of the, of the presentation that I wanted all the board members to see, we decided that we would do the entire presentation tonight. One of the first, well, early on in the process of the proposed final budget, we really have our work cut out for us in terms of trying to reduce the deficit that we are facing right now as well as trying to live within our revenue. And really, my goal is really to show picture of what's happening over the next five years. This first slide is a history of the Act One index and the exceptions that the district took. Very early on in, after Act One was enacted, D-Board did take the exceptions that they qualified for, a number of them. There were some significant increases in millage in those first few years. Then, the recession of 2008, very sensitive to the impact on all of our district residents and taxpayers of what it had done to anyone. And the, the increases were limited. At the same time, limiting the tax increases, we also reduced expenses tremendously. And we were entering a period, some of the, due to recession maybe, maybe not, of decline in enrollment. But we did reduce expenses quite a bit. We did not take the exceptions until the first one we took over that five-year period was for the, this current year, we took thirty-nine thousand of the special ed exception. That was a seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar exception. That's gone. We will never be able to recoup any of these exceptions, eight million dollars. So, we've held a line on taxes, and that, and that's the point of that slide.
So, an exception is, is that what we did last time, right? We increased taxes to forty-seven percent.
Right.
Exception allows up to four-fifty-one, that's what you mean. So, that's money we've, in effect, left on the table by having the exceptions.
We've left, it's gone, yeah.
Right.
We left it on the table.
Had we taken the exceptions, we'd have had eight more million dollars into
We would have had millage.
Period of that time.
Right. And there are a lot of limitations as far as what your fund balance could be. So, could we have ever taken all of that? No, because there's limits on your fund balance. But those are the things that we had to qualify for. And because we were reducing our expenditures at the same time, I, you know, your limit is a percentage of your expenditure. So, there's, there's moving pieces, but in any event, that's where we are.
Anne?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that, similar to fact, actually would be even more dramatic if you showed how much we didn't even take it in terms of Act One.
Right.
That was permitted by Act One.
Correct.
We didn't go to the bank.
Right. Because
Yeah, we won't be able to.
These were the adjusted index amounts, and these were the actual increases.
I, I think it's important to know as well too that in the last five budgets, the most we have taken is half of what we could have. So, I know that we have heard in the past that we taxed, we taxed, we taxed. But I think there has been a, at least of looking at the totality and trying to cut expenses and not raise taxes just to the max that we could have. I just think that's one of the reasons we wanted to bring this out so everyone could at least get a refresher for where we have been with what our tax increases have been.
But I think we were remarkably fortunate that we had so many staff that we retired and we didn't replace. And that was how we managed to squeeze down in the manner that we did, and that was stuff. I'll just leave it at that.
But I will, but we would have needed to with, with reduction in students as well.
I'm not sure to quite as acute. But I, I give administration credit for it.
Right. It was a combination, reduction in students as well as creatively moving teachers around with their certifications and maximizing the resources that we have in terms of staff.
Yeah, and I think if you look around, we've obviously fared much better than some of our teachers. So, we can be grateful for that also.
This next slide is, while it's a little blurry, it shows the pension launch. This is a net number, retirement expense. The rates are going up toward thirty percent over the next five years. Net expense, meaning the state reimburses the district, all school districts in Pennsylvania, at least fifty percent. So, that is a net number. This is the increase in the expense over the next five years, two-point-six million dollars. We have committed funds for this. We have been using it. We have not been taking exceptions approved for retirement contribution, and we'll talk about this more later. It's in the governor's budget, well, in one section of his presentation, he says, well, we can't kick the can down the road. And then he proposes to reduce the colors as such. I have not incorporated in the fourteen-fifteen budget what that reduction would be if we would reduce it to a two-point-five, by two-point, two-point-two-five percent. But this would be the amount of the reduction in the revised employer contribution rate. Really, his plan would defer the employer's contributions by one-point-eight million approximately over the next five years. And that's pretty much kicking the can down the road. So, I've not
About three-hundred thousand dollars for next year.
Right. Last year, he proposed something similar, it didn't happen. So, we just have to wait and see how it all plays out over the next couple of months.
And that last year that we show, we have that for twenty-five consecutive years.
Thirty percent.
So, that thirty percent is then for twenty-five consecutive years, so. There's nothing we can do about it.
Okay.
Suppose.
Well, as I mentioned last evening, when we were talking here at the meeting, the law in 2010 says at least fifty percent. So, the state, you know, they could kick in more than fifty percent if they wanted to, but they're not doing that. And therefore, the burden of the fifty percent is on us. They could, they could do it to sixty percent if they wanted. They can kick in sixty percent, they can, they could kick in seventy percent if they wanted to.
Or they could have real reform.
Yeah.
The legislators don't have the guts to really reform the pension system. And that means in the proposal, they don't want to touch current retirees, they don't want to touch current employees. It's a reality that the problem goes back to the early two thousands. It's severely underfunded, then you have the recession. These, and, you know, the actual actuaries, they, they calculated all this. In order to sustain that system, the rates have to go up that high. And, you know, if the, well, let's continue on. We're looking at the, where we are right now, this current year. Right now, we're looking at a deficit of five-hundred-twenty-five thousand. That's down from one-point-eight million. We fared better in revenue and we, and in expense as well. We'll continue to monitor that, especially special education and wages and benefits. I wanted to show, you know, the summary slide first. And I wanted to also include what our other funds are. This is the general fund, fifteen million, and we have capital projects of six-point-three, which includes new money of two-point-four million for future capital projects, and a Watten Creek, one-point-seven million. And this is our food service fund, under a million. So, in total, twenty-four million. Looking at what's going to happen next year, we'd be going down to about twenty million. These are the different scenarios, no tax increase, we have three-million-dollar deficit. Act One index at two-point-seven percent, one-point-nine million. Pension exception, that's the only exception that we qualify for. There's only three, actually four remaining exceptions. Two of them are related to construction. There's the pension, which is employer retirement contribution, and then special education. We only qualify for one exception. And I really would like people to think of in terms of not the pension exception, but this is an exception that would allow the district, if needed, to raise above the index because our costs are growing so much more than the index. We did not take the special education exception last year, seven-hundred-some-thousand. We don't qualify this year because we held a line, we took, teachers took a freeze. But we gave up a huge exception for special education, took thirty-nine thousand. This year, I have seen, you know, such an increase in the needs of special education students. We're opening an autistic classroom at Reifton. We need to add a teacher, aides, classroom supplies. The placements at partners, PAL are increasing. We don't have that exception to take now because just the way they, it's calculated. So, an exception, any exception, should be looked at in terms of that's available to meet some need of the district. Not necessarily just pension, but a need of the district. And I, I really would like everyone to think in those terms. That's my opinion. But going forward, I'm sure we'll have a lot of discussion on that. The assignments, commitments, we've had these in place to address pension, capital improvement, healthcare increase. And assignments of fund balance, they're not board-approved, but there are recommendations of use of fund balance in the future. Deficit, this deficit relates to this. This deficit would occur if the following year, fifteen, sixteen. That will be a use of fund balance. Special education costs, I've added this one in because I am truly concerned about the escalation in, in those costs. Affordable Care Act, things have been postponed, but, you know, we have to have some type of assignment for penalties that we might incur or absorbing more healthcare. Transportation, if we do construct transportation center, there will be increases in, in operating costs. Utilities, data lines, we'll need a grounds person because there's just, there'll just be more of an area to take, to take care of. So, there, we will add some operating costs there. And these are the other ones that were itemized at prior meetings. And this, this is all in your handouts. This is the capital money that I had referred to, that we, the six-point-three million, which is what's in our capital plus the new money, the six-point-three million. These are the assignments in the general fund. And this is just a, a draft of a plan on how we can use our capital money. Our Watten Creek funds will be tied up once we rebid and finish the, the site work. I don't know how long it'll take to litigate and get those funds from the bond company. So, listing all of these items, how we'll use funds from the capital fund as well as general fund, and taking us through 2018, nineteen, when there would be two-point-nine million remaining. And it all depends upon the decisions that are made with these funds.
Anne, could you explain, what's the difference between the, for the O-Watt Creek Fund, between what's in escrow and, and the fund balance of one-point-six million?
The, the three-hundred-ninety-two thousand you're referring to?
Well, under, your, your bottom line, it says one-point-six-eight-six.
Right. The difference between these two is the one-point-six.
So, how much, I mean, how much money is left?
There is the two million, and then we had some balances to pay the, the site work. So, we also have money in escrow until the
Yeah.
The HOP is released, et cetera. So, the escrow is six-hundred?
Forty-two million.
Right. So, it would be this amount less the six-hundred forty-two.
If I ask a question on the previous slide for the window on budget, there was five-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars in that budget. I thought we talked the other night about two-hundred thousand dollars price tag for year one.
Well, if it's year one, and then it's an assignment for future year. So, if you're doing grade, one grade, then there are three more grades that you're going to have to do in the future. If you're making a commitment to a one-to-one, then that's three more grade levels that will have one-to-one.
So, it's the four-year program?
Hundred-eighty thousand times.
The four-year program?
The four-year program.
We have to capture on the first.
No, this is really just an assignment for use of future, of fund balance in the future.
Thank you.
The school board budget goal, minimal negative impact on students, staff, and citizens of our district to maintain the financial health of the Exeter School District. I think every, the board has done a great job, as well as administrators, in doing this over the past several years. But it's, it's going to become increasingly difficult. And right now, I'll just go through the changes since the preliminary budget. Our deficit's down to five-hundred-twenty-five thousand. Transportation subsidy has changed. While we've reduced some routes, you also lose subsidy. So, I'm reflecting a reduction in both this year and next year. And our, another subsidy for tuition for homeless foster kids, we refer to as tuition for orphans, that's reduced. And that's based upon the actual number of students placed. Retirement special pay, reduce one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. We know teacher retirements, a couple support are built in for some possible others. So, I don't think it's going to be high as we've got in there. Legal, utilities, electric, we've brought that down. Charter school, we're holding tight on the, the current enrollment, or I base it on daily membership and some other areas. So, a reduction of two-hundred-ninety thousand. We started out with one-point-eight million. But it is subject to change as we go through what happens reviewing special ed. The proposed final budget for revenue is up by ninety thousand. The, our general in arms, and this is really good news, up four million. It was one-billion-three-hundred-ninety-four million, now it's one-billion-three-hundred-ninety-seven million. So, that's, that's very good news that we have that increase.
Is that additional businesses, or?
Part of that was Panera Bread, lots of construction at Bedford Circle and a couple other areas, so. State sources of revenue, again, I mentioned these before, transportation. The governor's budget includes special education funding of 63,000 for next year. I've not included it yet because that was, actually, that's Pasbo's calculation. The Department of Education, they have not made their own calculation yet. That's just their estimate. Ready to learn, new initiative, block grant, 563,000 more. We have the accountability block grant, that's 180,000, they're being rolled together. But I haven't included it yet in our numbers because waiting to get more information on whether we can supplant or, you know, is it new initiatives? So again, I mentioned the the increase in assessed value, we have a 97 percent collection rate. We give back money to the industrial authority for the TIF. So that's where that increase.
Yeah. At what point are you going to put in the 563,000 for the grant?
Well, this week, I'm going to the Pasbo conference and we hope to get the answer about what how it's going to work. Can you supplant? And once I have that information, you know, I'll come back and for the next presentation, probably include it that. But it's and also you'll see this later, it's not a done deal because there are comments have been made that, you know, those school districts that have reimbursable projects going on, they when they they're at a point when there's the moratorium that they're in a holding pattern, they are not getting reimbursement. Some comments that they maybe they maybe they'll put money towards that. So until we know that this is a sure thing.
Yeah, I agree with some folks that they're seven years out of plan time, they haven't got a done.
And what's the state property tax reduction?
That is the homestead farmstead.
Okay.
And that hasn't changed in years, has it, as far as the state?
No.
That's another thing, you know, they used they said they were going to have increased gaming laws, you know, and parlor games and all that to help with that. And yet, the governor does other projects other than, you know, funding the schools. So that's another thing where the state has the money and uses it someplace else.
This just illustrates that our local support of education has increased over the years.
So what is the local level, what 73.7%?
Seventy-one percent.
Seventy-one percent. And all these mandates that they're putting on us constantly, more and more and more, but like the Common Core with all the data collections we have to do and all that, all unfended mandates, and yet they give us less.
We have two employees just dedicated to data.
Yeah.
Collection and management.
Yeah. It's ridiculous.
And I try to provide information that is helpful to all board members, newer board members, just to really look at what has happened with state and federal funding over the years. Here's where the our funds came into play, SFSF. So we really, there's a drop off in 1112 of our basic education subsidy. Special education, again, flat funded, Pasbo estimate is 63,000. That's going to do a lot of good. Transportation, I pretty much, the only increase, 300,000 is related to debt service. Because our debt has gone up, that reimbursement goes up. So the biggest increase in state funding to our district is really in the retirement, reimbursement for employer retirement contribution. We've lost a lot of extra grants, as most all school districts have, as well as federal funding. Ready to learn, I don't have it in the budget yet. We have to work on a plan. Once we know if the planning's fine, how we will really use those funds. So and Title I, Title II, IDEIA, it's we've lost there. We funded a lot of new special education teachers with IDEIA. Now that has dropped off. That's that has become locally funded. Access, we've got some real issues with the administration of access. So all in all, 1.5 million, I'm showing an increase year to year. That is related to reimbursement for retirement. This number, I've included it in there, and the debt service. So there's really no significant, well, this this. Ready to learn, we our grade is above 80, so we have a lot of flexibility in what we could use the funds for. My question is about supplanting. So hopefully, we'll find out more about that. What could we use it for? All full-day kindergarten. We initiated the last two schools to become all full-day were Lorraine and Owatton. We added two teachers, but we didn't add money to the budget because there were some retirements. Accountability block grant, lost 280,000 since 10/11. So all those full-day kindergarten, multi-age teachers had were became locally funded. Even instructional coach and language arts, people would like to continue that because of the good things, the improvements that have been made, that could be a use of those funds. Or the STEM, new initiatives, math curriculum, as well as the one-to-one laptop initiative. And we have a lot of things to work out, but they seem to qualify. But the these things here would use the 563,000 anymore. Then it's it's not a done deal.
So when will we know? When will be effective? When will the budgets?
I see, over the next two months, the legislators are really going to be hashing through a lot of it, so.
But is it safe to say that we won't really know, but certainly the budget is announced to be voted on?
Well, I think we'll have to make a decision about including it in our budget. And I mean, if all school districts really want this money, then they should include it in their budget and send that message to legislators and the governor that we want it, we need it. I think the message that, you know, some a lot of people are saying, put it in the basic education subsidy. Don't define it as a block grant because block grants, you could just take away. We I already talked about the special education and the collars on the retirement. The net reduction in cost would be greater 19,000 if they reduce the collars. Expenses, again, you're increasing 3.3 million, the drivers, wages, benefits, and professional services, as well as increase in some debt. What we've reduced, and again, as I said in the beginning, we have a lot of work ahead of us. Wages, this is just the impact of two retiring aides, replacing them, but we're looking at not replacing them. Healthcare, 6.62 percent, down from 8 percent. And Betty, is it supposed to go to 6.25?
The proposed plan changes are approved by the Health Trust Board.
Okay.
Could go probably six, what you have there is probably 6.25 at the lowest.
And there's an opportunity, there was an opportunity for it to go lower or?
There was, there was, and some difficulty with labor and management agreeing on when this plan changes.
Would take place.
Looking at a tiered plan where certain hospitals outside of the tier would be, those who go to them would be charged a higher proportion. Mike, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, it's called narrow networks. Basically, what happens is the lower-cost healthcare provider, you know, if you're aligned in a narrow network, typically, your employees do not have a co-pay, they don't have co-insurance or deductible, but you have to be locked into that provider, but you're selecting that provider because by far they're the lowest cost. Typically, a equal or better quality provider. So actually, starting to see a lot of organizations because aside of wages, their healthcare benefits are typically reset from largest cost.
Tier is both T E A R, right?
Yeah.
That's care, that's what we try to do, tailor the money.
And I'm going through the budget line by line and, you know, talking with administrators. I don't like adding something to the budget, but we've talked about cameras in the buses for some time. We have money in this year's budget to do a number of buses, but we need a loader at the bus garage. Artists failed. And we also are getting some really very needy students in from early intervention. One student, Rick was just telling me today, requires, it's a handicap bus, requires air conditioning. We don't have air conditioning in any of our buses, so we can get a bus retrofitted, but that's going to cost money. So the funds that we have in this year's budget for cameras may indeed go for a loader, which they needed to get the snow out of the area, as well as retrofitting handicap bus with air conditioning. Those are the priorities. This may not last, a lot of things may not last as we go through this whole process, but I just want to have a placeholder for it in the meantime. Junior High is looking at their two retirements, professional as well as one regular education aide. So they're working on that. Special ed is doing an audit of all of their special ed aides throughout the district. And again, these are what's driving the increase in expense of over $3 million year to year. And I've shown this before. Obviously, the one biggest one is the retirement. And as Dr. Davis said, the STEM program, that some of that will be funded through the foundation, which I don't have built in in the revenue. So going back to the the slide that I showed at the very beginning, $3 million deficit. If you would increase taxes by the index, 1.9, taking an exception, we qualify for the value, that's about 558,000, brings it down to 1.4. But again, this number can't go above 8 percent. The 6.5 million as a percentage of your expenditures cannot be more than 8 percent in the budget that you adopt. But there are, depending on, and one thing that I would like to do the next budget meeting, business function, is really talk about the commitments, where we're at, what level we want to keep them at, or how we want to unravel them, as well as all of the assignments going forward. Again, this is the commitments that we currently have, and really how to address this public school employers' contribution rate. When you make a commitment, the best thing, best use of commitments are the one-time As the the peers' contribution rate, well, you can use your commitments, but that increase is always there. If you're not building it into your millage, you and once you exhaust your commitment, the only way to address that increasing cost is cutting other areas. And this is what I wanted to share with the entire board because part of our presentation for the merger between Antietam and Exeter on the 26th, we'll be looking at 1617 and a combined school district. We'll be looking at each school individually, 1516, 1617, and then combining them, as well as possibly what we look like in 1718. But for our purposes, scenario one, no millage increase. Our current millage is 30.795. And the assumptions that I make about revenue and expense, an increase in assessed value, you know, two tenths of a percent, this current year is four tenths of a percent. Those huge increases from years ago, I, you know, are no longer, it's a more modest increase unless things change dramatically in the, you know, township planning. Flat funding, basic ed, as well as special ed. Expenses, we're looking at between two and 3 percent increases in different areas. Of course, our expense reflects the dramatic increase in the pension contribution, as well as healthcare trending out at rates as high as 9 percent. So that's why you're seeing increases that are very modest in revenue, expense at a higher rate, and the deficit just continues to grow. Then that's with not reducing program. I built in some attrition of about 200,000 per year related to staff retirements, but this to illustrate the magnitude of the problem with the pension launch, with healthcare, and trying to give contract increases to our staff, you know, providing benefits, et cetera. So at the end of 1617, you pretty much chewed up your fund balance. Raising to the index, the index assumptions here, that's Exeter's adjusted index. I've based those numbers on the independent fiscal office, what their projections are for the Act One, and then I've adjusted it based upon our market value aid ratio. So you'd be, we may be looking at increases up in the index, 3 percent, 2.9, 3.5. So in that event, obviously, still dealing with significant deficits. But the fund balance, you know, is still there by the end of 1718, but by 1819, there is no fund balance. But again, that's that doesn't really look at curtailing program.
So is that is that a trend that would hold for a merged district?
What you're going to see is that Antietam and Exeter are very similar in what their financial position with no tax increase, or it will show an index increase. And I think also a number of school districts, I can't say all, or some that are in a different position, and maybe their revenues are growing more. But what you'll see in 1617, yes, operating at a deficit will provide what the ongoing costs are. As far as when you do merge, you know, there's some savings and there's some additional costs, and then there's one-time costs that can show. Scenario three is taking the exception that the district qualifies for. And the pension exception, really, any significant amount will only be available in 1415, 1516, and 1617. Because once you're up at that rate, your year-to-year increase is not going to be significant. So that's why it's 4.1 with the exception of these two years, but 2.9, because there's really nothing significant here because you're at a 30 percent contribution rate, or after reimbursement, 50 percent contribution rate. Under that scenario, still dealing with deficits that we have to start, you know, curtailing now, we have to cut back on program to address this. But at the end of 1819, there is still a 3 percent fund balance. And that's by taking advantage of the exception that I know we qualify for for employer contributions. I don't know what will happen with special ed. There might be one in the out year. I haven't made that projection.
So that makes sense enough. I mean, I'm certainly no financial expert, but if you go back to that previous slide, if you don't increase taxes at all. If you go back to that previous slide, if you don't increase taxes at all, there's simply no way that you can just cut, you can reduce your expenses and get out of this financial problem. I mean, you know, how do you cut $7.1 million worth of program here, sort of four and a half million? Is that?
Well, but you, yeah, you can't wait. You have to really start now. And of course, on the revenue side, I don't know that the state is really going to step up to the plate and provide much more funding. They're still dealing with, you know, we're all really crawling, still crawling out of the reception. There are some bright spots at the state level and at the local level. So will some of these numbers improve? Will there be more increases? A little bit. But again, you know, this is, it's the pension, it's the healthcare, it's the contract increases. We have a contract which goes through the end of 1516 with two of our bargaining units. You know, we are going to have to again look at really controlling those costs. But we really need to start now. But also realizing that if you want to give contract increases that are fair, if you want to provide benefits, and as far as the pension, that is a benefit. You have to look at it in terms of total compensation. And if you want to provide those things for your employees, then you have to raise taxes in order to keep up with it, in order to keep up with the resources that they need. Or we'll have to make some tough decisions on really what to cut. And what you really start with are your non-mandate services, student activities, athletics. And I have a whole list of things which I've presented at other times. And we'll be going through this exercise as we develop, develop the budget. As people leave their jobs, retire, resign, we won't be filling them. We'll look at reducing hours for certain staff to a point where we're not getting ourselves into a situation of unemployment compensation. These are going to be tough choices that we have to make. But again, when, during negotiations, when I was asked the question, well, what could be, what could we afford? I says, well, whatever you offer, remember, you're going to have to raise taxes because of the healthcare rate increasing, because of the pension rate increasing. So it's total compensation and you have to remember that, that it costs money to do those things. Scenario three, there is still a fund balance remaining if you are taking an exception in those three years as well as raising to the index. And this is just to illustrate how this, that's the whole calculation, the exception in the out years, 558. This is what the exception would be the future years, as I mentioned. In those last two years, it's basically nothing. This is just a chart of what happens to fund balance. As I indicated, 1819, raising the index plus the exception, there is a fund balance remaining. Again, just to give you an idea, the index generates this much in dollars at the different village rates, just raising to the index. This is what the pension costs. Maybe you should have this down here. And then these are all of the other major items which are driving the budget. And it's really just to give you, to illustrate how the pension provides so much, but then there are, excuse me, the index provides so much, but then there are so many other costs that need to be covered. And that's all that I have for this.
Can we go back to page 20? Or my page 20? I'm sorry. The general fund budget, yeah. So I'm looking at the column, the difference between raising no tax increase and 2.7%. Those two columns. So I can see if we raise taxes 2.7%, our revenue goes up by about 1.1 million. So our deficit goes down 1.1 million, which makes sense. So we're using the tax increase to change the, lower the deficit. But then I go back, why does our fund balance change though? I mean, at the bottom, how can our fund balance, you'd say the unassigned fund balance go from 3 million to 5.4 million if we're using all the extra money to reduce the deficit?
This is the remainder, the calculation is what our current fund balance is minus this, minus your commitments, less your assignments, and that becomes your unreserved.
Because the revenue's going up.
So the, the number that you don't see is 15.5 million minus that. I don't know what the exact number is, but that's the remaining. This is the total.
Okay.
The next meeting is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a little slow. If we're increasing our revenue by 1.1 million of the difference between no tax increase and 2.7% increase, we use, I still don't know, I'm sorry, how, I can see how we're reducing our deficit.
And we're reducing the fund balance.
Fund balance going up even more.
The unassigned.
2.1, 1.1 million.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's showing a $2.4 million difference, but it's only 1.1 million is what David was asking.
Between here and here?
Well, no.
The unassigned, the 3 million versus the 5.4 million. Right.
Don't we use some of that fund balance in the 0% increase? Versus if we don't use it as much when we're going to 2.7%? Is that the difference?
Just give me a second here.
Well, this is the current year, 5.2 minus the 1.9 would give you 3.13.3 million to that. Am I not clear?
No, no, it's the line.
It's the unassigned.
Oh, the unassigned.
Yeah, because.
Oh, because this changes, your budget deficit for the following year.
For the next year.
For the next year. Because if you are raising to the index this for 1415, I look at, well, you can raise the index for 1415, but what happens in 1516 when you have no increase in tax, because I don't know what will happen, then it's a deficit of $3.3 million. So it's a difference of 1.3 million between the two years. If that's.
Well, I can see where you want to look ahead, because any deficit's going to accumulate.
But it is a use, you, as an assignment, when all of that, the GASP announcement came out, you do have assignment to look at use of fund balance. And the use of fund balance is your budget deficit for the following fiscal year.
I'm done.
Okay, I didn't want to interrupt.
Thank you.
I guess there were three things I wanted to touch. The first one was, I knew that when we were looking at the initial budget this year, there was a question, why were we taking these exceptions? And the reason we took them was not to utilize them later. It just allows us the flexibility. Because if we were to look at that first slide that we looked at this evening, every one of those years, we requested every one of the exceptions at the initial budget. But when it came down to the final budget, we didn't use, you know, we nearly used over half of them, if not less of them. So I think of slide one that illustrates that best, or slide one or two. What we went after was really, did that max allow? We applied for that, but then we only used what's left. Since I know that there were some questions when we did our initial run-through this year on that year. The second thing was that when we look at what's going on with the Peasars and the exceptions that will be allowed, as highlighted by Ann in the last couple of slides there, that's going to, basically it's going to be gone. We're not going to have that exception eventually, even though they were going to be at that 31.5% rate, we're going to be losing that exception pretty much. It's going to be down to nil that will be allocated. I think that was in slide 28, 29, or something like that. It basically disappears. The third thing, I was really concerned though, if we go back to slide, I think it was 24 possibly, 23. Yeah, if we look at that as commitments and assigned/unassigned balance area, and we look at where we're going to be with our money, I get concerned about how we're going to pay for emergencies, repairs, and anything else that comes down the road when I look at that number. Maybe it's just the way I look at the world. I look at it as, how do we accomplish anything when we're at a negative deficit of 20 million? Bring in 500,000, because you're 500,000 that year, I can't wait to see what 19, 20 looks like. That's kind of where I'm at with this thing. I really, I think the prognosis is terminal. The question is, do you want to go in with half a lung or no lungs? I prefer having half a lung.
No, I've, I've said this before, I've said it in the past, that the pension situation is such a disaster. And when you're looking at the long-term ramifications of what we have to spend, there's no business that can support 15% of their own funds, much less 30% for 25 years for a retirement plan. You just can't. There's no way we can tax our way out of it. And regardless of if we take that exception, or how we decide to take that exception, it's just, do we run out of money in this year or halfway through the following year? It's very, very frustrating, and I know especially to Brian, if she balances, tries to balance these numbers, that there's really nothing you can do. I mean, if you look at from, from an actual wage perspective, we're really very similar to where we were four or five years ago. So from an actual wage perspective, we are there. There's just so many other expenses, especially Peasars. I mean, again, too, we went from 1.2 million to 5 million in the space of 5 million, five years, six years. So there is absolutely zero, zero, zero chance whatsoever you can tax your way out of this. And I myself will not support, and I've said this in the past, I will not vote to take an exception for Peasars because there's no way in hell we can work our way out of it, even with that exception. It's only going to maybe extend it another half a year at best. And there's nothing, there's nothing we can do. But we've done a really, really good job of chopping, chopping, chopping and trying to keep the tax increase down to a minimum. But again, even if we take it to the maximum, every single year, we're still going to come up way, way short. So that's the decision, I think, that collectively we're going to have to make as far as do we take that exception? I will not vote for it.
If I'm mistaken though, do we have an exception for special ed this year? And that's costing us a good amount of money. We don't get an exception for charter schools. That costs us one and a half million dollars a year. I mean, we're looking at, it doesn't matter what the title or the name is of that exception, as Ann pointed out, it's the only available resource we have to pick up for something that we do not get any compensation from. We don't get help from the government, from the state front. One way or another, we have to help our local students with their special ed needs. We have to help them, we get abused by the charter school thing. We're not going to, we're not going to envision that story, but the fact is, we still have a very major line item there. And this is the one avenue we do have to pay for that unfortunately. Because as you mentioned, we have all these costs that keep going up. We've controlled our salaries through attrition, the fact that people retired, but we still have these graduating costs that the only way we can make amends, the way to deal with it is by utilizing that one tool we have because it's disappearing. As we already saw, we saw, we lost $7 million of that tool. Frankly, I'm happy if we get raised in taxes $7 million, it makes it a lot easier when we get home. But, you know, reality is reality.
And the reality of the situation is there's, there's no way again we can collectively tax our way out of it. So where, what do you do? I mean, that's, that's the decision. Because the Peasars thing is, again, you have 20, you have 25 years of 30%. 25 years.
Excuse me, is that 30% or 15%?
It's 15 and a half.
The rate on retirement wages is 30%. The state in turn reimburses the district 50%.
Right. And it could do more if it wanted to. Because that, the law says at minimum 50%. So, you know, let's not beat the Peasars thing up to a dead horse because it is half of that. And it could be less than that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to hold my breath for that, regardless of who's going to. I'm not envisioning that.
The state created the problem.
True, but we're living with it.
And we're, yeah, as, as everything that we're living with, with the state. But, you know, if it changes hands, we might have, we might not have a chance.
The only thing I'll point out, as I did last night, is this is not an Exeter problem. This is not a Pennsylvania problem. This is not a teachers' problem. Time Magazine right now has an article on, this is a national problem. And everything, any organization that has a pension brand right now is finding out they cannot fund that. So this is not just a local problem. This is a national crisis because it's not 100 million, it's not a couple hundred million, it's not a billion. It's close to, it's over 20. That's a big number, a lot of zeros.
And it was caused by Wall Street under press.
No, it was caused by not being able to fund things because it's not, I mean, you can't sustain this.
Regardless, I mean, you have a situation where, again, if you, if you have a model and a formula that's saying, okay, this is based on 8% compounded every single year, and you have years where you have negative earnings, obviously you're behind evil. But, I mean, what happened or what caused it, it's irrelevant. I mean, this is the situation we're in, and what we have to do is make a decision based on, what can we do for the kids as far as, is educating them? And what do we do to the community members as far as taxing them? And that's really in a simple.
So what you're advocating for is really let it take its course.
That's exactly right, because I think we're playing chicken. And there's no way, every single school district's in the same boat. Every single school district is going to be in position where it's going to be a fund balance of zero.
Oh, I.
So, so it's what exactly do we do? And the thing is, you know, I know Tim and I, we talked a little bit about, can you borrow? But when you look at these numbers, how can we borrow 100 million dollars to fund it? I mean, what will we have to pay for it? And there's just, there's just so many, there's so many issues at hand with the whole school funding formula that's just a disaster that I just don't want to unfairly burden the taxpayers on something that can't be fixed like us. That's all I'm saying.
But what, if we collect that, that money, then it still gives us extra money to meet our normal, our, our normal expenses. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're just collecting it to give it to the pension, to make it a pension property.
Right.
It's, it helps to pay for our, our normal operating expenses. And so we're really chipping away from, from our income to pay for our normal operating expenses. And I don't think that's appropriate. I mean, it's just, it's like giving up on school. I think that we can support this. I mean, we may not, you and I may not be around by the time this whole thing falls apart. Well, I probably won't be around, but aside from that though, but it's still, you know, we're still.
Yes. I don't think you think, I don't think it's as far away as you think.
Yeah, I think we will be around.
Yeah.
And that's really what I think Joe is counting on.
Well, not counting on.
No, that we will be around. The fact that we don't have the assets or the ability to correct this problem.
No, but if we keep using our.
Now, we go away with the kids that were playing the music tonight that kept my voice quiet for a couple hours. We do away with the kids that we are recognizing for their athletic excellence, and we continue our core mission, which is providing an education. Three arts, read and write arithmetic, if it boils down to that. But we can't, we cannot afford to make up for what the state says. But we can't, we cannot afford to make up for what the state says we have to pay.
I want to apologize for the tone. We're the burden.
Yeah. I mean, that's the whole point. Now, how, and I think Joe's position is, we could, I guess, lower taxes sometime in the future. I think I saw one township, if there are one municipality, that did it this year. But the fact is, it's like a new house. The junk in your house expands to the fill of the square footage that you have. I used to live in 1,200-foot, square-foot apartment. Now I got a 4,000-square-foot house, and I get, it's just as full. And the same thing can be said for budgets, because there is always, we might want to bring back the kids' family music. We might want to bring back the athletics, and now we're spending to what we have, even if the state fixes the program. So I think it's a matter of controlling, we have controlled our operating expenses. And now it is getting to the point where the state requirements, special ed, and Peasers are pushing the same.
I would prefer not to do both.
I had to be last man standing.
Okay. Well, but I don't think that's the way you...
But that doesn't mean that I put it up to a 40 mil tax rate for the citizens' extra catch-up. That's not more than that.
Yes, I have a solution.
I just have a question. I don't have a solution.
Oh, boring.
Well...
Thanks for that. I'm adding to you.
Well, I said I have a solution, but I toy aside to that. But anyways, this is Guy's issue. Does the return on investment for the Peasers pension account, does that affect the expenditures that the school has to pay though?
Does it affect the retirement contribution?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they're constantly looking at, you know, what it's all, the actuaries, what it's all costing, and that's how they determine what the ECR is, the employer contribution rate. I mean, I guess they're using 8% at this point. I mean, it's all built into it, and that, the picture is 30% contribution rates for a number of years.
If the return on investment does better than 8%, will that decrease the expenditures that the school district has to pay towards pension?
I think it depends because the actual payroll over the past couple of years of retirement has gone down because districts have reduced their staff. So there's different variables which are impacting on how they're actually being able to fund the people that are retired already, those that are getting to that, you know, into the future.
So it could make no difference at all?
Yeah, I couldn't say, you know, Peasers has a website, and Mr. Clay is their director. There's some good information there, they're very under reports, and he's organized...
That's where my question came from, from reading.
Part of the problem is that it's underfunded to the tune of like 46, 47 million. So everyone's playing catch-up.
I thought it was the one.
And it might depend on what you read. It's been a good week with the market.
Are there any comments that have to be discussed this evening? We've got other work to do. We'll be working on this the first Monday of next month, again, second Monday.
It's the day before the workshop. It's April 7.
There will be more work done in Edinburgh, but we will be reviewing again...
Or 7.
7.
Next Thursday. I thought it was the 10.
The 10 is the other meeting.
It's the day before the workshop meeting.
I think it's time to move on now. We're starting to cover things we've covered for five years. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening?
Well, I just wanted to comment to open up. Oh, me or you?
Yeah.
You guys, you know, I think your little group there does a lot better with issues of importance to the citizens of Pennsylvania than the legislature does. So I would hope that...
I think we move on now. I would like the board to gather behind me so Mr. Kramer can take our picture. Then we're going to go into executive session to try to finish up some business. Thank you.